Welcome, everyone. Before we begin, we'll have a prayer by Councilwoman Mahalovich, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. November is a month that gives us pause to give Thanksgiving. On Veterans Day, we pause to recognize and honor our armed services. For all the men and women, past and present, in the armed services, we pray that their efforts will not be forgotten and that we may continue to live in the freedom they helped protect. Next week, we pause and take stock of our blessings by gathering with friends and family. President Kennedy wrote, "We must find time to stop and thank the people who make a difference in our lives." And remember that we, as we express our gratitude, we must never forget that the highest appreciation is not to utter the words, but to live by them. Therefore, let us remember those past and present of our armed services by thanking them for their service, and also remember to thank people like the citizens of Jefferson City who make a difference in our lives. In his name, we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll now call to order the November 18th, 2019, City Council meeting. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Graham.
Hensley.
Present.
Hussey.
Here.
Kimna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Praether.
Present.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
Item three, adoption of agenda. Councilwoman Wiseman, did you want to make a motion?
I move to switch the announcements and the bills pending this evening.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. So basically, yes.
Sorry. We'll also need to include 10. The city code requires an opportunity for citizens to comment on any bill pending before the city council. So 10 would need to be taken up before any pending.
Yeah, I think we'll leave nine, 10, and 11. We'll leave all that in place.
Okay.
So we'll only move announcements and only bills pending.
There you go.
So we'll still do the public information, public comments. So basically, we're just going to do bills pending first to make sure that before a council person has to leave, we want to get through all of that. So, thank you. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. We're very excited this evening to have with us tonight and recognize the Helius Lady Crusaders softball team and also their head coach, Chris Wirick, on their Class III state championship title. Congratulations, everyone! Wow! That is fantastic, and we're very proud of you. So if we could, we would love to welcome the team to come to the podium. And if you would like to just tell us in the mic, you could say your name and maybe what position that you play, and we can have the coach come up too and say a few words about your season and some of the exciting times, and just give us a moment to recognize you and thank you for working so hard and attaining that title. So you're welcome to come forward. And then before you leave, we want to, of course, get a group picture with everybody. So I'll welcome up Coach and the entire team. Welcome. And then you're welcome to come up, and if you just wanted a time, want to give us your name, and you can tell us if you're junior, senior, or whatever, and what position you played.
Riley Heckenkamp, senior catcher.
Holly Hinchess, right field, senior.
Kenley Hostlog, senior, first base.
Ella Meyer, sophomore, shortstop.
Abigail Helscher, senior, third base.
Taylor Ware, centerfield, senior.
Lauren Howell, senior pitcher.
Mallory Rogers, sophomore, designated hitter.
Corey Verzloes, junior, designated hitter.
Alex Reymar, junior, pitcher.
Liv Blumer, sophomore, pinch runner.
Paige Loubring, senior, second base.
Riley Cobb, senior, left field.
Taffeta Imhoff, senior pitcher.
Paige Schaefer, sophomore, designated hitter.
Molly Berkey, freshman pitcher.
I'm Chris Wirick. I'm the head coach. Excuse me? I did graduate, yes. I'd just say thank you for the invite to the council meeting tonight. Say I'm very proud of the girls for what they accomplished. They beat a lot of good teams this year. I think, what'd you say? We scored 31 runs and only gave up one run in the playoffs, which is pretty good. Proud of them, extremely proud of them, extremely proud of my coaches back here, Kelly Fick, Barry Delaney, and Megan Smith. Hopefully, we can come back and do this again next year. Thank you.
Well, congratulations. We are very proud of you. I know you've had a wonderful season, and you have a great group of student athletes here, and we just appreciate you making Jefferson City proud. I know we have a graduate of Helius. I know David Kimna is a Helius grad. And do we have any other Helius grads on our council today? And Emily, our city clerk, Emily Donaldson is also, so way to go, Helius. But we're very proud of you, and I know it's been a great season, and we've enjoyed watching all the excitement, and very, very proud of your team. Does council have any questions or comments? Councilman Kimna?
Thank you.
Great. Well, congratulations to each and every one of you. I know you worked very hard to attain this championship title, and I know it's something that you'll always remember, and it's something that has made us very proud. So thank you very much. And I do have a Helius letter hanging up in my office, like a letter from a letter jacket. So I always get to go in and see that, and I think it's great to recognize the effort of all of you. So congratulations, and we'd love to get a picture. So if y'all want to come forward, and does anyone else have anything to say before we move away from the mic? Would you like to say anything?
Now they're speechless.
You're welcome to, if you want to say anything at all. Any exciting moments that you want to share with the rest of the council?
Not a minute.
Yes. Feel free to go on to the mic.
When Coach Wirick almost cried at the end of the state game. And then we didn't see him for about five minutes, so I think that's when he went off and cried, without us looking.
That's great. That is a great moment. That is definitely, I think that would make a lot of sense. So, good for you, Coach. Did you have something, Councilman?
Oh, I was just...
For some of the seniors, do you want to share with us where you're going? You're welcome to come up to the mic and tell us.
I'm going to the University of Arkansas next year.
Great.
I'm going to Georgia University next year.
University of Missouri.
State Fair in Sedalia.
Great. Any others? Well, they're all going to be very fortunate to have you there. So congratulations again. Anything else to add? Okay. Well, congratulations. We're very proud of you. So if you all want to come forward, and we will get a group council picture, and also want to thank all the families and friends that are here this evening, too, and they're welcome to come and take pictures as well. And the other, coaches, if any coaches want to come up. Congratulations again. Very excited for everybody. Great team. All right. Item five, public hearings. And we do have a public hearing on Bill 201868. Mrs. Donaldson.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 35, the zoning code, to establish short-term rental of a residence and short-term rental of a lodging room as a permitted use in residential and industrial zoning districts.
And we will not be voting on this item tonight. It is on the informal calendar at the request of Councilman Graham, but I will turn it over to Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk read, this bill deals with short-term rentals and the various zoning districts that, and how short-term rentals are treated within the zoning code and become an allowed use within the different zoning districts. Short-term rentals are, by definition, residential units that are listed for rent or for occupation for a period of less than one month. Usually, such rentals are done on the various online platforms such as VRBO or Airbnb. But as defined within the zoning code, a short-term rental is any rental of a residential use or unit for less than one month. It deals with residential units and also rental of a portion of a residential unit, such as a single bedroom within a larger residential unit. And that is why the council bill reads as a short-term rental of a residential unit or as a lodging room. And so there's two separate uses there, but for most intensive purposes, they can be combined into a single thing. They're being treated the same way within the zoning code. A little bit of history. The short-term rentals were originally incorporated into the zoning code in January of 2018. Prior to that, there was nothing that allowed them as a permitted use within Jefferson City. It was incorporated into the zoning code in two separate parts. The first part is what's termed specific use standards, a list of standards that would be applicable to all short-term residential uses. Standards such as the maximum number of guests that can be present within a short-term residential use, making sure that such uses are not used as places for parties or receptions, things like that, establishing some parking standards for the use, and making sure it's clear in how they're dealt with in terms of business licensing, the lodging tax, and also making sure that they get applicable life safety and fire inspections. That was the first part of the two-part approach that was incorporated into the zoning code. The second part is what's termed a special exception permit process. This is a special zoning process that's applicable for short-term residential uses within the residential and also the industrial zoning districts, but primarily, it's a residential zoning type of use. A special exception permit is a permit that a property owner can apply for. Their application goes in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission in a public hearing format, very similar to a rezoning action. The Planning and Zoning Commission hears the application, also hears testimony from any supporters, opponents, surrounding property owners and such that want to comment on the proposal, and then makes a recommendation that is forwarded on to the city council, with the city council going through a very similar public hearing process, and ultimately, the city council being the decider on whether a special exception permit is issued or not. So short-term residential uses are currently a special exception use within the single-family, multifamily residential districts, and again, also that industrial district, which is mostly there for the very few grandfathered residential uses that happen to be located in industrial districts. But as I mentioned, it's primarily a residential type of impact. So the short-term residential, or I'm sorry, yeah, the short-term residential use has been in the zoning code for about two years now in that time. A total of nine applications for special exception permits have come in front of the city, first through the Planning and Zoning Commission, where all nine applications received a recommendation for approval. And then all nine of those applications continued on to the city council, where all but one of them was ultimately approved by the city council. And so this is a use that is subject to a fairly intensive process. That special exception permit process is fairly intensive as zoning processes go. For example, special exception permits are often other uses that require a special exception permit. Can be things such as very high-intensity uses, such as big-box retail stores, junkyards, landfills, things that have a very high level of potential impact on surrounding properties. And so we have gotten a lot of, a fair amount of comments from applicants, as this process is explained to them, that is a fairly intensive process, considering what they believe that their use is. It's also a fairly burdensome type of thing on staff. It takes a lot of staff time to process each one of these cases. And also for the general public, it's a very, it can be a very hard thing for the general public to understand. It's a fairly complex zoning process and zoning application that these are subject to. And so a lot of these items were brought up first at an administration committee meeting, committee of the city council, representatives from the city council. It was brought up at their August meeting, where some of this was brought up and thinking that maybe it should be looked at if there is a less intensive way to deal with the short-term residential uses in the city. But it was reported and quickly recognized. It's really a land use matter, and so staff at that time reported that it would bring the question up in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so at the September meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, staff brought up this, how to, the topic of short-term rentals in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, where they discussed it, and they ultimately voted to direct staff to prepare a zoning code amendment, which is this amendment that is in front of you tonight. And so then in October, the Planning and Zoning Commission, that was formally presented to them in a public hearing format, they voted eight to zero to recommend approval of this, this proposed amendment, and then, you know, so it appears in front of you with a recommendation for approval. The bill would reclassify short-term rentals from a special exception use to a permitted use in the residential zoning districts and also the two industrial zoning districts. So up on the screen is an excerpt from the zoning code, dealing with those, again, they're divided into two different categories, but they're dealt with exactly the same all the way across. A short-term rental of an entire residence and short-term rental of a single room within a residence. And so it would change that from a special exception permit use, again, within all those residential zoning districts, to a permitted use, an outright permitted use, and also the industrial districts. As the mayor mentioned, it was voted at the last meeting to place this item on the informal calendar, and so it is scheduled for a dual public hearing. So a public hearing not only tonight, on the November 18th, but also at the December 2nd meeting, where it would be eligible to be voted on at that meeting. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions prior to opening the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Any questions of council? Okay. If not, we will open the public hearing portion. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on Bill 201868 this evening? Okay. So seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion, and typically, at this time, we would take up the bill, but we will not this evening because it's already on the informal. So at the request of Councilman Graham, we will take up the bill at the next city council meeting. All right. Any questions on that process or comments? Okay. Item six, appointments by the mayor. Mrs. Strope.
Thank you. We have three reappointments to the Environmental Quality Commission. That's Kristy Campbell, Todd Higgins, and Rita Esterly, and then one reappointment to the Housing Authority, and that is for Larry Cobb. And for Mr. Cobb's position, this will be a third full-term appointment, so it would require two-thirds majority approval of the council.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That slate has passed, including the two-thirds required for Mr. Cobb. Item seven, we have presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. We have a presentation on our Smart 911 app. I'd like to invite Captain Derek Heisland to give us a presentation about the app.
Thank you. Last week, Tuesday, we had a press conference here in the council chambers, addressing the media, that we have fully functioning Smart 911 now. Everything's implemented. It took a lot of work behind the scenes to get the software companies that we use in our dispatch center to talk to one another, and we finally got it all going, and it's already reaping benefits down in our 911 center in getting the information to our operators that we wouldn't have had normally down in communications. It, I know one instance last week, we had a young lady that called 911 on her phone, and we couldn't get a call back, no answer on call back. We were able to initiate text messaging with that individual, and it was, luckily, it was just an inadvertent dial on her behalf, but we were able to get that information. She was actually a student in school, so she couldn't talk on her phone, but she could text us back so that we knew that she was safe and everything was good. So that's one of the benefits of the Smart 911. We're also working with, I know I worked with Pathways a couple of weeks ago in advising them that they can enter a lot of information on different mental disabilities or anything, any issues there may be at homes, that they could enter that health information into the app so that we have more information going in, so that we don't come in blind. And Madam Mayor got me with a lady at Missouri Developmental Disability Council, and I got with her today, and they're going to really promote this also. One thing, if you've got your tax bills, Larry Vincent up at the county has printed 55,000 copies of this and inserted them in each of the tax bills that were sent out to residents in our area. So we're getting the word out, and the numbers are increasing significantly on it, so. And I have pamphlets, also placed some pamphlets out in the lobby area there. But if anybody has any questions or issues with it, please give me a call, and I can try to get the answers to you.
Great. Thank you, Captain Heisland. This is a great resource, and it's definitely something that we should all opt into for the benefit of the added safety that this could bring. So it's definitely worth it. It's a great partnership with the city and county, so we appreciate Cole County working with us on this. Does council have any questions about the app or the process? All right. And I'm sure we've all downloaded it. It's really easy to do. I've downloaded and shown my mom how to download it now, too, and so we can show our friends and family as well. And just to help you get the PR, let's get a council picture of us. If you would come up, Captain Heisland, and maybe if you brought your phone, hold your phone up, and we'll be like, it's so easy, put it on your phone. So, all right, we'll get a quick picture. And as a reminder, it is an opt-in feature, so it is not automatically on there, but if you're interested, we would encourage everyone to do that. All right. We have, we're going to skip item eight. We've amended the agenda to come back to announcements later. Item nine, we don't have Lincoln here this evening. Carolyn is not here. Item 10, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. And we don't have anyone signed up, but I know Andrea Hendricks had requested possibly to speak. Did you want to speak tonight, or just to see which item that was on the agenda? Okay. So you don't need to speak this evening, or, okay. All right. Sorry to put you on the spot. I know we were in communication earlier, but I know you didn't get a chance to get here before the sign up. So if you do, if you wanted to, I want to make sure you have that opportunity. So, all right. So we don't have anyone signed up tonight, so we will go to item, let's see here, 11, consent agendas. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. So we are going to go now to bills pending, and what we'll do is come back to bills introduced later. Okay. So bills pending, item 13, 201964.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the Donald R. Rackers Trust dated the 22nd day of January 1981, and the Clara M. Rackers Trust dated the 22nd day of January 1981, and executed by their trustee Clara M. Rackers for the purchase of property addressed as 1136 East Dunklin Street.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this would authorize a purchase of real estate at 1136 East Dunklin. It's the purchase price $250,000. Currently, it's a building that, if you drove by it, had the Joshua House church at it. The purchase of the property is being done for the Dunklin and Clark Roundabout at that intersection. It's a half-cent sales tax project, city-county project, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Council comments or deliberation? Councilman, I'm not sure...
Was Mahalovich raising his hand?
Is there hands up? I can't tell. No? Councilman Mahalovich?
I did have a question regarding this, the genesis of some of this, a lengthy bill that was years ago regarding the closing of Chestnut. And the neighbors in that area really, really thought that congestion resulted in chestnut and resulted in more, I'm sorry. And I remember, even given that this was a very busy intersection, we didn't have the closing of Chestnut. Just reminding folks that the neighborhood, all those proceedings are available, and those meetings are actually taking years. So I do remember people thinking, as I was at this time, that chestnut was a possibility.
Thank you, Councilman Mahalovich. Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. As to this bill, though, about the acquisition of this property, I mean, it's my understanding that before the project can move forward, the council still has to approve it. So I have some concern, great deal of concern, acquiring property for the purpose of clearing the way for this project before we've actually finally approved the project. Also, a little concerned, I haven't, you know, we haven't been able to review supporting documentation for a quarter-million-dollar purchase price. So, I mean, for those two reasons, I don't know how I could possibly support it tonight.
Councilman, I'm not sure.
Was Mahalovich raising his hand?
Is there hands up? I can't tell. No? Councilman Mahalovich?
I did have a question regarding to this, the genesis of some of this was a lengthy bill that was years ago regarding the closing of Chestnut. And the neighbors in that area really, really thought that congestion resulted in chestnut, resulted in more. I remember, even given that this was a very busy intersection, we didn't have those proceedings available at those meetings. I'm not going to take one year. I do remember people thinking part of this at the time, and that resulted in chestnut.
Thank you, Councilman Mahalovich. Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. As to this bill, though, about the acquisition of this property, I mean, it's my understanding that before the project can move forward, the council still has to approve it. So I have some concern, great deal of concern, acquiring property for the purpose of clearing the way for this project before we've actually finally approved the project. Also, a little concerned, I haven't, you know, we haven't been able to review supporting documentation for a quarter million dollar purchase price. So, I mean, for those two reasons, I don't know how I could possibly support it tonight, which is not to say anything about the project. That'll be a whole other conversation potentially. But just as to this particular bill, I don't know how I could vote yes.
Councilman Wiseman?
Yes. After the last meeting, we had, or, well, at the last meeting, we had a discussion about the, I think there was something with Bartlett and West that looked at that intersection. I couldn't find that in the Public Works stuff, in the Public Works packets. And is that the safest thing to do with this intersection? It seems as if there's a large island there, and it seems, I mean, it seems like there are other things that we could potentially do with that. And I just haven't had an opportunity to review that.
Yeah. I mean, so going back, I can start at the beginning, kind of, if you want, just real quickly, but it did, this, I believe the whole project precipitated from that discussion about potential closures of Chestnut and rerouting of traffic, adding more dorm space, things like that to the LU campus. So it was listed in the sales tax as a named project, the Dunklin-Clark intersections. The, and so then after that, you know, the staff worked with the council to approve a contract to do a traffic study, and it didn't only include this intersection, but it included the interchange as well, kind of the corridor through there. So anything that the city might do would play well, if you will, with what happens at the ramp terminals to Clark and the highway. And that study going way back had shown roundabouts to be constructed there in the future. The, and so the traffic study looked at all options, do-nothing, signals, roundabouts, I think stop signs even, just four-way stop signs. In any way, so that was a lengthy study. It took about a year to complete. We reviewed that with the Public Works and Planning Committee and as well as the county. I believe it should be in the documents, but I can certainly get you a copy. But we, at that time, discussed, you know, what option to pursue, and the staff did recommend as well as the roundabout options for various reasons. But the, it also, it lent itself to being constructed and worked well with what the state would do in the future as well. So that's where that came from. And then, so after that study was discussed and recommended for that, we worked out a design contract then with Bartlett and West, and that was on the council agenda. I sent out in a note last July, the council approved a construction contract with Bartlett, or, excuse me, a design contract with Bartlett and West to design a roundabout here. So as we go through the design process, then we typically do go ahead and start acquiring the properties, the public, you know, this was in the paper, and alerted the adjoining property owners, "Hey, something's going to happen." And so they began contacting us about their properties. And so typically, when we have a willing seller like this at appraised value, we do go ahead and try to purchase that property while we can. And so that, you know, the signal to the staff was the approval of that contract to begin design. And so as we're going through this over the next year, we'll be acquiring all the, we would typically be acquiring all the property, and then the final contract would be the construction contract for that, that project. This is the typical flow of how the project would work on something like this. So hopefully I hit all the points, but if I didn't, go ahead, try it again.
Councilman, or, I'm sorry, Councilman Mahalovich next.
I think one of the things that I've always guided by is what the voters have passed in the, in that, the 2017 sales tax G is, it was a named project. It said exactly what it was going to do and for how much it was assigned to that project. So I guess the question is, since it's a named project, it's going to occur, would it, would at this case, would altering the plans alter the way the project is going to be delivered to the public? Because I have a, I'm convinced in my own mind that we have an obligation to make that interchange improvements. So the question is, is there an opportunity to change the design at this point to still make the interchange improvements that the voters approved?
Well, I mean, there's always council priority, but it's been past precedent, if you will, if we, if there is a project with a name to it, that we do try to complete that project in some fashion. But, you know, the council always has discretion in the matter in the end.
Councilman Hussey?
I would suspect that we named maybe the intersection or the location in need of improvement.
Correct.
But I don't recall us naming the specific fix to the intersection, correct?
No, that's correct.
And so I would suspect that what I'm hearing is that some hesitation on, is this the particular fix that's the best use of resources, not that there doesn't need to be maybe some modifications made to make the intersection safer. I'd be curious that, at the time of that conversation years ago, Break Time was still an operating gas station convenience shop, which has since closed. And I don't know how long that closure's been. But I wonder how much of the intersection traffic and issues were a result of that being on that corner, and if its closure is actually modified traffic behavior and issues within the intersection itself.
And, and just not to get, the traffic study is very extensive, but mainly the problem with this particular intersection was geometry regardless of traffic. There was some, also some speeding concerns. Roundabout would do good at that as well. Whatever we did here, whether it's a traffic signal or a roundabout, they end up costing roughly the same amount of money. So the warrants best fit the roundabout. There weren't really warrants meant for a traffic signal. There were some pedestrian issues. I think there is still heavy pedestrian movements in the area back and forth. I'm sure the closure of the Break Time probably less of that potentially, but I would still speculate there's plenty of pedestrian traffic in the area.
Councilman Hensley?
At the risk of getting too much into a debate over, or a discussion over something that we're not actually considering tonight, I happen to drive through this intersection two or three round trips a day, and I know a bunch of people who live near this particular intersection, have talked to them. And, I mean, most of the complaints I hear are about the mark, you know, the markings on the road, the, you know, keeping clear lane markings. There's also a line-of-sight concern because of cars parked on the street, and potentially also some lighting concern in some spots. And when I've been talking to people about what the price tag on this thing is going to be, you know, they, everyone is fine with the fix, and if the roundabout is the suggested one, I think people are fine with that. But when they hear it's going to be approaching $2 million, you know, there's some shock on some faces. So recent conversations, and, you know, also in this particular area, the conditions of some of the streets, I think, cause question for some folks as to whether this is the highest $2 million streetwork priority in this neighborhood. So, you know, if we're going to be weighing heavily the, you know, the list of things that was presented to voters some time ago, I think it may also be worth considering the thoughts of folks affected by this intersection and by the conditions of other roads in this particular area as well. But again, as to tonight's bill, we haven't finally approved this project, and we still haven't seen what was used to support this valuation. So, thank you.
Councilman Hussey?
Well, I guess that, again, it's two separate issues. There's the debate about the project and the discussion about the purchase of the property itself. I know that the Chestnut potential closure was a catalyst for some of this conversation, and my guess would be had that discussion itself not kind of come up prior to, this project may or may not have actually been on the radar of the council or on a list in that regard. But in terms of comfort level, if we, I assume staff has appraisals and some of, like comps to make folks maybe feel more informed or comfortable with those particular dollar amounts. If we push off for a couple of weeks, Matt, does that do any harm to us, just if we share that and separate and say, "At least hear some of the specifics about..."
Yeah. The standard is, we do an appraisal. Moore and Shrock did the appraisal, certified appraisal, in a typical fashion that meets all the state laws. So that's how it was appraised. I just have, I have a copy of the summary page, but certainly we can distribute that if that's what the council would like.
Well, we've got a couple of voices, I think, missing tonight as well. I know Councilman Graham had been involved quite a bit with the Chestnut conversation before, and so, and Councilman Prather, a long time on this particular issue. I mean, if there's no hurry to particularly get this bill passed tonight, I guess I would be comfortable and the council could overrule me of just placing this on the informal and getting some of that information about the appraisal and a little more clarity to folks, and giving a few weeks' time just for some further consideration and contemplation of the issue. I understand there's been multiple steps in the process, and I don't think that staff has acted. In my opinion, staff has not acted out of line in terms of moving it in this manner. I think that there's a number of us in the council that maybe are looking back and saying, "This may not be the best and wisest use of dollars in that particular area." Or at least I've heard enough concerns expressed by folks that live in the area who question the need for the project in particular. And Councilman Mahalovich made a good point about, there were some, lots of folks that came and spoke to the council previously about this issue, and it's probably worth at least revisiting some of those notes if they exist and just gathering that input. So I would ask Madam Mayor just to place the bill on the informal calendar.
So you just asked to place it on the informal as the sponsor? Are there any objections to placing it on the informal? Okay. Seeing none, the bill sponsor has asked that to be placed on the informal. Okay. 201965.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a property lease amendment with the Joshua House Church for property addressed as 1136 East Dunklin Street.
Mr. Marash?
This is a companion bill, the previous one, so I assume, we wouldn't have a lease to modify if not for the purchase, so I assume it would go on the informal as well.
Councilman Hussey?
I think that's a wise course of action, since it's hard to execute a lease on a building that we're not, at this point, executing a contract to purchase. So I would ask to place it on the informal.
Any objections to Councilman Hussey's request? Seeing none, that is on the informal. 201966.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a supplemental agreement with Cole County for the reconstruction of the Militia Drive railroad crossing as part of the Morris Development Project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Again, as clerk indicated, this would be a supplemental to the city-county agreement for the Morris Packaging Development. That basically, that agreement, they hired a railroad contractor to extend a rail line. The city's in need of similar services to replace our crossing on Militia Drive. The cost is $141,000, so we'd do that. The vehicle would be a change order to that contract. And so since the county holds the contract, this would allow us to utilize it to do the work.
Any questions or comments? Councilman Hussey?
I would just add that, I mean, staff's worked diligently on this, and this is the kind of project with Morris Packaging over time that's been a business that's grown greatly. And so this is a solid investment to help industry that was new to our community continue to expand and grow. And so when the public looks for where those dollars go to support economic development, this is the kind of place that with a rail spur, you spur some additional business activity, which is good for the community.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. 201967.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of special obligation improvement bonds, Series 2019, in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $7,500,000, prescribing the form and details of said bonds and the covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain actions and documents and prescribing other matters relating thereto.
Mr. Mullman?
Thank you. This ordinance approves the issuance of special obligation improvement bonds for the purpose of Parks Master Plan implementation. Joining us tonight are Mr. Todd Gooffey with Piper Jaffrey, the city's municipal financial advisor, and also joining us tonight is Hayden Crumpton, city's bond counsel with the firm of Gilmore &amp; Bell. They will be able to answer any specific questions that the council has on this particular bill. But essentially, this bill authorizes issuance of seven, up to $7.5 million in special obligation bonds, which are programmed to be paid out of the parks' sales tax. So if there's any questions, you can address those to myself, or Mr. Crumpton, or Mr. Gooffey. I don't know if Todd or Hayden had anything specific to add on the bills before we open up for questions.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion of council? Okay. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Shreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes, and thank you all for being here as well.
Those bonds will go on sale Wednesday morning, Wednesday morning.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
201969.
Amending the 2019-2020 budget by changing the position title and pay grade of a mechanic position to mechanic supervisor in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Mr. Spalding?
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Oh, sorry.
Councilman Mahalovich?
This is a question really for both of these. Didn't we do, we did a salary compensation study a couple of years ago and leveled all that. I assume that things have changed, or maybe it didn't address all of the parks' positions?
It did. There's just been some gradual changes in them. One of the examples in the mechanic position is that position is now supervising. So we have a mechanic supervisor position, so it's just moving the person who has taken over supervising staff in the Parks Department from the mechanic position to the mechanic supervisor position, as an example.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Shreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Bill passes. 201970.
Amending the 2019-2020 budget by changing the pay grade of the senior management analyst position in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Mr. Spalding?
Thank you. Yes, same deal. The responsibilities and autonomy of our position has increased to senior management analyst. The person in that position, her role has changed quite a bit. Also, a couple of positions have kind of gone off the books, so we asked Gail and her department to review that, and it came back to a grade 19. So, again, no fiscal impact, but change in responsibilities and autonomy.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Shreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes. 201971.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 18 miscellaneous provisions and offenses related to controlled substances.
Mr. Mullman?
Thank you. This bill addresses the city's criminal code to allow for possession and use of medical marijuana consistent with the Missouri Constitution. These amendments specifically add a new Section 1820, sorry, 18283 and Section 18284 dealing with medical marijuana and transportation of medical marijuana. These regulations are consistent with both the state constitution and regulations promulgated by the Department of Health and Senior Services, who is the state agency administering the medical marijuana program here in the state of Missouri. Probably most of note in the changes to the criminal code is that it creates a new offense of failing to produce a medical marijuana identification card. So this would compel officer has reason to believe that a person is in possession of medical, or in possession of marijuana, they can ask that that person provide, um, and show them a copy of their, uh, their medical marijuana identification card, and failure to produce that card is in and of itself a, uh, a offense. And so, um, I do note that there is a substitute for this bill. Um, the substitute catches a typo in the previous bill. Uh, previously, um, in Section 18281, um, there is language added in subsection A that said it is unlawful for any person to possess, and this is the added language, "any amount," um, and then 35 grams or less of marijuana. The substitute clarifies that the words, um, "35 grams or less" are to be stricken. Uh, this would expand the city's jurisdiction over possession of marijuana cases and allows, uh, city municipal court prosecution of any type of marijuana possession. Uh, previously, it was only for amounts under 35 grams. So, in working with, uh, between the city prosecutor and the county prosecutor, uh, this opens up some flexibility for those prosecutors to decide where the appropriate forum for, um, marijuana possession cases would be, either in the circuit court or in municipal court, um, as the, as the, uh, as the case may dictate. So, this just expands discretion on where those cases will be heard. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions on this bill, uh, that they have.
Any questions? Uh, Councilman Schreiber?
I believe in a previous discussion that we had on, uh, this issue, it came up about, uh, medical marijuana cards from other states being, um, allowed here as well. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. It's, it's, the indications that we have is that if anyone is able to produce a medical marijuana card from another state, that the, uh, state law enforcement, Missouri law enforcement is bound to honor that. However, the strictures, the restrictions on possession of medical marijuana in Missouri are governed by Missouri law, even though that authorization to possess medical marijuana is issued by, um, by another state. It's the, the recognition, recognition, (laugh) recognition of other states' medical marijuana cards is likely required under the full faith and credit clause of the U.S. Constitution, but the actual possession, the, the, the regulations that you have to, uh, conform to when possessing medical marijuana in Missouri are governed by Missouri law.
But if that is, in fact, allowed, that could be rather problematic for an enforcement aspect for law enforcement, couldn't it?
Well, I, I think, I think it could be potentially problematic, but I think that is kind of the position that we are put in. Um, that's, that's kind of the nature of the beast. Um, I don't believe that, uh, there's really any, or any other choice than to recognize medical marijuana cards from other states. So, um, it, it certainly adds a layer of complication for our law enforcement officials. I just don't know if there's a, a good answer for it.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Mahalovich?
Move to take up the substitute.
A motion to take up the substitute. Is there a second on the substitute, then we'll take up the bill?
Second.
Any further discussion on taking up the substitute? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, at this time, we'll take up 2019-71 with substitute one. Any further discussion? Councilman Fitzwater?
Just to follow up on the councilman's question, so there's nothing a state can do?
Well, so, so, of course, marijuana is, is illegal at a federal level, and so, it's hard to say whether or not, uh, full faith and credit, uh, clause of the U.S. Constitution would apply to, um, licenses which are in violation of federal law. It's an open legal question. I don't know the answer to it. Um, I think that the state constitution attempts to step in, um, and answer the question and essentially say, "If you're, if you're good in another state, you're good here as well." And so, um, it's, it's an open legal question. I would say that likely, um, states, um, and at least law enforcement officials here in Missouri, um, you know, if litigated, would, would ultimately have to allow recognition of, of, uh, medical marijuana cards from other states. That's, but that is analysis just kind of based on textual. There's no case law, uh, to support that, um, because it's kind of a new issue, at least that I'm aware of. So, um, if there is anything that could be done, I'm not sure that is anything that the city council, um, could really do anything about. It's probably an issue of state law.
But the decision will be made point of sale by a clerk, if they're going to accept the out-of-state card or not accept the out-of-state card?
I, I'm sorry, I guess I don't understand the question.
Someone from out-of-state goes into a facility to get their products, and they have an out-of-state card, who will make the decision if that is a qualifying card?
So, um, that is a matter of state law that is regulated by the Department of Health and Senior Services. Um, and, but I, I think at a practical level, that'll be up to the, um, to the businesses to determine whether or not a person has a valid state, out-of-state medical marijuana card.
And we think they're going to say no if they don't think it's valid?
Well, I think, I think that, um, someone that would sell medical marijuana to someone that is not allowed to possess it is risking their, their state license. So, um, I think it's just kind of a matter of how much, uh, risk they have to be doing those types of illegal sales. Um, I would hope that most of the people who are going through the licensure process are upstanding businesspeople and wouldn't seek to violate state law, but that's just a hope. So, it's truly problematic for law enforcement. There's, there's a lot of problems with it being legal at the state level and not legal at the federal level that there's just two, lots of unanswered questions, I think. And I think this, this particular matter is just kind of one of those unanswered questions that I don't think there's enough guidance on to, to really address.
Further questions, comments?
No, thank you.
Okay.
I know you're, you're just, you're responding. Uh, thank you.
Uh, roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
No.
Graham?
Abstain.
Hussey?
Aye.
There's only five ayes. Five to two, so where does that put us?
The ordinance does not pass.
We need six to pass.
Six to pass.
Okay, the ordinance fails. All right, 2019-72.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 17 licenses, taxation, and miscellaneous business regulations related to medical marijuana facilities.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. Um, similar to the previous bill, this bill attempts to address, uh, medical marijuana in the realm of business licensing. Um, essentially, this bill requires people who, uh, are entitled to open a medical marijuana, uh, facility under state law to, uh, subject themselves to the city's business licensing regulations. Um, this bill would require medical marijuana facilities to obtain a city business license, uh, which costs an annual amount of $350. Um, this would condition the city, uh, business license on continuous maintenance of the, uh, of the state medical marijuana license. Um, the new Section 17402, Operation of Medical Marijuana Facilities, um, governs operations of medical marijuana facilities consistent with, uh, the Missouri Constitution, regulations promulgated by the Department of Health and Senior Services. Um, probably the most noteworthy, uh, regulation is contained in 17402A, which, uh, sets prohibited hours of sales. Uh, medical marijuana dispensary facilities, which are the retail facilities, um, cannot be open or make sales between the hours of 7:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Um, this does require that, um, for example, medical marijuana facilities provide a security plan to, uh, law enforcement so that they're aware of security plans at these, uh, locations. Requires permanent location, so there's no, uh, mobile medical marijuana facilities. Um, requires or, um, specifies that medical marijuana facilities have to control their odors emitting from their facilities. Um, sets forth minimum age, uh, allows for sale of accessories, and, uh, prohibits unauthorized sales of, to unlicensed persons, and also, uh, prohibits, uh, the use of medical marijuana facilities for unlawful purposes. Um, so essentially, uh, these, these, these regulations are meant to fill the hole that exists between, um, the state constitution and what, uh, law enforcement needs to, uh, effectively, uh, regulate these businesses in a meaningful manner here in the city of Jefferson.
Thank you, Mr. Mollman. Any questions and discussion?
So, I, I, I would like to note, in the absence of these regulations, we would be governed only by state law. So, these regulations are in addition to those things that are, um, allowed by state law. So, um, these should be rightly viewed as, uh, regulations that are consistent with the state constitution and the state law, but are in addition to what would regularly, um, be required in the absence of these regulations.
Thank you. Councilman Hussey?
So, state that, in the absence of these regulations passed, which we see to be putting another layer on? Yes. We would have more minimal standards established by the state. And so, this allows us greater protection? Greater protection. With our businesses? Yes. So, this is a, okay, so a vote in favor puts some greater restrictions on this business activity in our community? Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Uh, Councilman Mahalovich?
As noted in the summary, it was passed, uh, 5/0 through, um, Public Safety, I believe.
That's correct.
Or whoever was present that day.
Uh, yes, unanimously of those voting.
Further question, comments? Roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Hensley?
Abstain.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Bill passes. Okay, now we're going back to item 12, bills introduced. 2019-73.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the FY 2020 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the Park Fund.
Mr. Spalding?
Thank you. This is for supplemental appropriation. We, uh, budgeted and approved these vehicles, the Park Commission did, in our last fiscal year budget. Um, they were not able to get us those, uh, vehicles in time, so we're asking for supplemental appropriation for our current fiscal year. Um, two vehicles, uh, an aerial bucket truck and a dump bed truck.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, 2019-74.
An ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development project for Modern Litho Print Company, a Missouri corporation, consisting of the acquisition and installation of certain personal property and equipment at the company's manufacturing facility, authorizing the city of Jefferson, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds, Modern Litho Print Company Project, Series 2019, in a principal amount not to exceed $5 million to finance the cost of such project, authorizing and approving certain documents and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. Um, so, this ordinance would, uh, approve, um, Chapter 100 bonds, which would be used to provide, uh, tax abatement for the Modern Litho, um, company for purchase of new equipment. Uh, joining us tonight, Sean Sappingfield with the, uh, Chamber of Commerce. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Sappingfield up to give us a brief overview of what this project is.
Welcome, Mr. Sappingfield.
Mayor, Council, Sean Sappingfield, again, uh, Jefferson City Chamber. Uh, this, not to exceed $5 million for the purposes of tax abatement to incentivize the company to, to produce their expansion, uh, here in, here in Jefferson City at their facility at Algoa. The press is already in and producing product, um, and jobs have already been created. Through this, uh, Modern Litho has indicated, and it is in a, um, agreement, a performance agreement, that they will create 25 jobs over a five-year period, and the cap is, and they will use it, is a $5 million for equipment. And the majority of that investment is for an offset press, so about roughly $4 million.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sappingfield? Councilman Mahalovich?
I believe they, the, they will buy all the bonds themselves, and the risk is fully on their shoulders. Is that correct?
The risk, the risk is on, on their shoulders as far as the performance agreement. I would have to defer on the purchase to Hayden on the purchase because it is a little confusing to some.
Yes, that's, that is correct. Under the Chapter 100 statute, the way these, uh, transactions are structured, structures, there has to be a bond transaction that takes place in order for the property to get off the tax rules and actually be, uh, under the title of the city. And the way these transactions work is basically that the company purchases its own bonds. So, there's really no financial risk on the city's part, other than the personal property tax abatement that's going to be provided as part of the project. Um, so, the, there is no financial risk, and any financial risk would be on the part of, of the company itself for purchasing the bonds, but they end up paying themselves because the, the city would then lease this equipment back to the company, um, in exchange for rental payments that are then used to pay debt service on the bonds. So, it's basically kind of a circular payment that, um, this, that the company is paying itself. So, again, it's mainly just, this is, uh, this is the way these transactions are structured under the statute, which is required in order to get the, uh, property off the tax rules. So, I'm a long way down.
Thank you for that, uh, explanation, and you just, uh, you made your travel worthwhile, then.
And I would note, the performance agreement, uh, contains appropriate clawbacks if, for whatever reason, the, uh, the 25 new jobs are not maintained for the life of the bonds.
Correct. And, and I will say that, um, uh, in 2016, we had a, uh, similar, uh, usage of the Chapter 100 bond, and Modern Litho had, uh, committed to 50 jobs. They're at, they have, uh, created 47, so they're two years ahead of schedule. And, uh, so with this one, again, they're going to create another 25 jobs in addition to, so they'll have another, they'll have a five-year period as well. So, going back to the 2016 bond issuance, uh, they have created 47 of the 50 that they had guaranteed us, um, within, basically, three years.
That's great. Any further questions or comments? All right, thank you all for the information.
Thank you.
2019-75.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, establishing election dates in the city of Jefferson, Missouri for the 2020 general municipal election.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. This bill, um, consistent with city code, establishes the, uh, April 2020 general municipal election, in which, um, one council member from each of the five wards will be up for election to, to, to your terms. The election will be held April 7th, 2020. Uh, filing for the, uh, council positions begins on Tuesday, December 17th, um, and ends 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 21st, 2020.
Any questions, comments? All right, 2019-76.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $35,269 agreement with County of Cole for the partnership whereby the county and city shall share an outdoor warning siren. The city agrees to pay the county 57 and 1/2% of the total cost of the county by Outdoor Warning Consulting, LLC.
Captain Heisler?
This is an agreement, uh, Bill Ford initiated with us to install an outdoor warning siren in the area, the downtown area. Uh, actually, it's going to be played- Actually, it's going to be placed behind, if approved, it's going to be placed behind the Chamber of Commerce off of the city parking lot there. The agreement is a $15,000 matching grant that the city and county are going to have. This county is going to pay the original $35,269, will be reimbursed through the federal government of $15,000, and then we will pay the rest out of our sales tax G, which we had money earmarked already in that budget.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Captain. 2019-77.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the city of Columbia, Missouri, relating to emergency assistance and reviewing building and site development plans.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is basically a joint aid agreement with the city of Columbia for building and site plan review. Actually, before the tornado, we had casual conversations about some sort of mutual aid agreement in our building regulations divisions, and the tornado kind of enlightened us to the need to start moving forward some of these, to get them in place. The bill specifically calls out that each of the communities would have the final review and approval of the plan reviews. Both of the cities are on the same version of the code. Each city will not review the other city's amendments to the code. There are some minor amendments that Columbia and Jeff City have differences on in the code. But basically, the mutual aid agreement would also provide for each city to pay the other city what they normally charge for that fee. I know the fiscal note says we might have possible revenue if we were to do some plan reviews for the city of Columbia. Certainly, we would get some revenue there, but if they do the plan reviews for us, there would be an expense on that. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. Oh, the city of Columbia has already passed this, by the way.
Great. We appreciate their partnership. Any questions or comments? All right. Thank you. 2019-78.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2020 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, by appropriating additional funds within the general fund.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you. As everyone's aware, there was a building collapse in June of 2018 up at 200 High Street, East High Street. We went through the process to, we declared that building dangerous, went through the process of a hearing, and worked out a stipulated finding of fact with the property owner. They recognized that the building is dangerous, and to abate the nuisance would be to actually demolish the building. They further agreed in that stipulation that they realized that any abatement costs that the city incurs would be put back on the property owner through a special tax lien or a personal debt. That was in January when that occurred. So 200 has been declared dangerous and ordered to repair it or demolish, and demolish is what the property owner recognizes. 202 East High is a little bit different. It depends on the structures to both sides of it, 204 and 200. Due to that construction method, we went through the same process and had a hearing. It was found to be dangerous and also ordered to be repaired or demolished. That was in February. Earlier in October, the city sat down with both the property owners and informed them that they've had plenty of time to start moving forward with either repairing or demolishing their buildings. This supplemental appropriation would fund the demolition of one or the other or both of the buildings, depending on if the property owners move forward by December 9. In both cases, we could seek reimbursement through the special tax bill and personal debt on either of those two properties. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilman Mahalovich?
Should we go, if we go through with this demolition, when could we expect the $300,000 to be paid from the landowners?
Currently, right now, we're not sure of how much each one may cost, so you're talking to different dollar amounts. We would probably split the special tax bill on within a month or so, if that is the correct timeframe. I don't know if we have a standard timeframe, but after we pay the bill ourselves, we issue a special tax bill, and we would record that up at the courthouse. So it could be a month. I believe the owner of 200 has agreed and recognizes that they would reimburse us sooner than later. The other property, it could go on the tax bill until something happens to it. The county, after three years, might be able to sell the property, and we've received nothing. I would imagine, in that case, our counselor, Mr. Moulman, would probably pursue some sort of foreclosure on the property, so at least we would not be out of the total loss of that amount.
So it could be within the fiscal year, or it could be quite a bit longer?
Yes, sir. My inclination is the property owner of 200 would pay us sooner since we have that stipulation.
Mr. Kroll?
I was just going to mention that as well on 200. Don't we already have an agreement with 200? So we have a stipulation saying that the city has the right to demolish the building. What we don't have is a final amount on that, and we are currently working with outside engineers to get an estimate on an affair kind of splitting of that cost between 200 and 202. So, and then the property owner at 200 has indicated that if the city were to undertake the demolition of 200, that he would pay back the city for that.
The likelihood of that occurring in this fiscal year is high.
Yes.
Than the other portion, not as high, but I think there's a good opportunity for a significant amount of that hopefully to be reimbursed as well.
What was the level of consideration to include this in the budget for this fiscal year? Because from my chair, I see our fund balance very thin. We haven't got our audit results back and won't for a little while, and we very well may have obligations that require us to go below our 17% policy, in which time I get concerned, especially when we've got the news on the flood and tornado, and I just don't see any bright spot in our fund balance.
I would share the, I would share the same concerns. I think in this particular case, though, there's an imminent danger that I think needs to be addressed, of which we are all aware, but I would certainly share those same concerns. And in this particular case, we anticipate at least a portion of the costs to be reimbursed in a timely manner.
When, I think it's fair to say, when we are going through the budget process in August and September, we were still hopeful that we were proceeding to a remedy where the property owners were able to, being able to address the situation on their own. It was after the budget process that it, kind of information and decisions have been made that kind of forced us to take a look at the property and decide that if anything was going to happen there, it was going to take city, some prodding from the city and city action. So.
Mr. Kroll?
And this is also to try to get ahead of the December 9 date. Maybe something happens by then, and they start their own process. I don't know how likely that is, but this is at least to try to get ahead of that.
Thank you. That's informative.
May I also add, tomorrow, there's going to be a final inspection of that party wall, the common wall, and hopefully by December 2nd, that's our goal, to have an actual contract that would have the dollar amounts in it. So you'd have more information on December 2nd to determine what you wish.
Any further questions, comments? Thank you for the information, Mr. Sanders. And I know some of this has been also in the courts. I know you didn't mention that piece in your summary. I'm sure if anybody tuned in and only saw what we talked about tonight, that the understanding that there has been, there's a lot more to it, which is understood, but wanted to also mention that it has not, of course, been solely in the hands of the city, but I appreciate your work up to this point. All right. 2019-79.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the times at which garage sales may not occur.
Mr. Moulman?
Thank you. This would amend Chapter 14 relating to garage sales, and it would push back the earliest time that a garage sale may be conducted from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m.
Any council questions, comments? And I know there was a little bit of discussion at the pre-meeting, how it came from a specific request that might have been in a non-residential area, though. So is it possible if this, that that could be changed?
Yeah, I mean, it's the council's pleasure on how we want to address this. I think this is a recommendation that is based on kind of the cleanest and most simplest way to address some comments and concerns that were forwarded to staff. But I think if the council is, you know, interested in carving a little more nuance into the issue, that's certainly within the prerogative of the council to do so.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay. Councilman Hussey?
Well, I think there's probably interest amongst the council in doing that, just, I think there's concern about a 6:00 a.m. start time in residential areas, and since the requests seem to come from a church that would not be in a residential area, maybe there's a chance to establish something different based on that particular zoning. I know it's very detailed for a garage sale, but as was indicated at the pre-meeting, people often line up early for those, and so I don't think anybody really would enjoy having their street lined with traffic at 5:00 a.m. for the 6:00 a.m. garage sale.
I think staff would be willing to work with any council member that wanted to put forward a substitute or amendment or anything to this bill for in preparation for the next meeting.
Okay. Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. Mr. Moulman, is garage sale a defined term in our code?
I believe it is. I'd have to kind of dig back into it.
Is it conceivable that the entity seeking this change would not actually qualify under the definition of garage sale if their sale is in fact not occurring in or around a garage?
I don't think the garage is a necessary component of it, but I'd have to dig it to, back into the code to kind of pull out the exact statute. I'd be happy to provide that in the near future to you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay. All right. Item 14, the informal calendar, 2019-68. That is staying on the informal. Item 15, we have no resolutions. Item 16, we have no one signed up for presentations from the gallery on other topics. Item 17, any council and staff discussion? Item 18, approval of the November 4th. Yes, Councilman Mahalovich?
Hi. The permissive use is granted by the council because it's real property, it's right of way. And so those typically, in the past, with the ordinance change for minor issues, they can come directly to the council and they can sit in agenda. Otherwise, more complicated ones go to the Public Works and Planning Committee. This is over off El Marine, of course, an older area of town, and there were some rights away behind these properties. Might be some utilities in them, things like that, but basically unimproved, and there's no foreseeable improvement coming in the future. And nobody's asking that it be vacated or something of that nature.
Item 18, is there a motion to approve the November 4 close session minutes? Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Praither?
Praither, Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Bill passes, or motion passes. Item 19, any new business? Twenty, any unfinished other than announcements? I think that's the last thing that we moved when we altered the agenda. So item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. Does council have any committee meetings or other announcements? Councilman Mahalovich? Any other announcements? Okay, I will do my announcement. So this Thursday, November 21st, there is a United Way fundraiser at Lincoln University. It is the greatest show on campus, and I will be participating in that along with, well, I will be Mayor Sandy and Michael "Danny" Downing. So we are going to do, it's a skit, it's a talent show. Is anyone else here participating in it? I would invite you all, if you want to participate, you're welcome to. It starts at 6:30. I would love to have any council members that want to back me up, or bring a guitar, or just bring their anything. So it is Thursday, November 21st?
Aye.
No, you're not.
President Lee, I would love for you to.
I'm sure you would. Well, okay, so the show starts at 6:30. It's at Richardson Auditorium, which is Mitchell Auditorium. All donations go to United Way. So I will, I'll give you a little preview of what you're going to get, for your $3, because it is so going to be worth it. Or you can donate now if you can't get there, or you can give to either me or Michael Downing, or any of the talent show participants. So, I got chills. They're multiplying. And I'm losing control. Come on now, 'cause the power they're supplying. It's electrifying. Come on now, Hensley. Carlos isn't here, somebody. You better shape up, 'cause I need a man. And my heart is set on you. You better shape up. You better understand. To my heart, I must be true. Nothing left, nothing left for me to do. Come on now, you're the one that I want. You are the one I want. Ooh, 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 honey. Oh, man, maybe I don't want you all to, oh, look at that, thank you. $3. Does that mean you don't have to come? I've been waiting. Okay, yeah, you can give me now if you don't want to come. All right. But it'll be worth every penny for that show, Thursday night. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. All right. Another donation opportunity. So I've got Sheriff Wheeler's mug right here. So Wednesday, December 4th, is the Power Plunge, Power Hour Polar Plunge. You all have a flyer at your place, and you can sign up. It's Wednesday, December 4th, at 5:00 p.m. on Madison Street. If you want to, if you've ever wanted to know what it's like to run through the freezing cold hazmat sprinklers, you get this opportunity. Councilman Mahalovich, I assume you'll be back again for the third year? Chief Schofield? You'll be back again? What? Hello? The fire truck supplied the water, but you went through it last time. So no pressure. Police, fire, and actually every department. That's why I made extra copies at your seats over there, department heads. You're not off the hook. Anyway, if anybody wants to participate, it's open to the public. We would love to have you participate. We suggest a donation of $500, because our goal is 20,000. We set our goal high. This all goes to Special Olympics, and you get to dress up and be whatever you want. I don't know if you figured out what you're going to be yet, councilman? Yeah, you were the polar bear last year, so. And then I have worn heels every time, so I will hold up to that standard. But anyway, if you could either donate, I got my bucket here, and make sure you put it in mine and not Sheriff Wheeler's, so. Anyway, but would love to have you participate or come and watch and support our Special Olympics. So Thursday, I'll give you the other announcements. Thursday, yes. Oh, my, I have totally lost control, but I am not surprised. So, okay, we'll see if we can make that happen. All right. If anybody has $500 and wants to see Councilman Wiseman do it, then even better, so. All right. So that is Wednesday, December 4th. Thursday, December 5th, is the mayor's Christmas tree lighting at Rotary Centennial Park. Thanks to Parks and Rec, they take that on every year, and I cannot wait to see the mayor's Christmas tree. That starts at 5:30 p.m. with the actual lighting at 6:30. Friday, December 6th, is Living Windows from 6 to 9, and Saturday, December 7th, is the Christmas parade at 4:30. So, and item B on announcements, the bicentennial moment, is that Missouri Star Quilting Company has all the submissions for the quilt. If you want to see that, go to missouri2021.org/bicentennialquilt. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? All right. Motion to adjourn? Motion to sing or donate or anything else? All right. All in favor, say aye. Have a great night.